Thank you, everyone, for your indulgence. We're going to, I'm going to call to order this meeting of Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It's Wednesday, February 28, 2024, and we will begin with our public statement, read by Commissioner Githens.
Good morning. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people, regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear. And we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. All right. Next on our agenda, we have department updates. We'll begin with the Health Department. Ms. Kelly, good morning.
Good morning. So, within Monroe County, hospital admissions and emergency room visits for COVID have decreased. Wastewater concentration levels are also continuing to decline. Flu activity is still noted as high. The Indiana Department of Health has confirmed a case of measles in Indiana. This is the first case since 2019. Vaccines are the best prevention to protect us from measles. We do have vaccines available for all ages with our Public Health Clinic at 812-353-3244.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
It's just pretty, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, that's okay. I'll change names. It's all right. I was just gonna say, do you, do people have to have an appointment to get, like, the measles vaccine, or can they do it on a walk-in basis? Do you know?
They can do it on a walk-in basis. Of course, appointments are always preferred, just to ensure that there's not a long wait time, but you can just walk in.
Thank you.
Jones?
I was just going to say that it's pretty bad news that we're getting measles here in Indiana, and I hope that people will take the vaccine really seriously. And if they aren't vaccinated, make sure they are, especially their children.
Absolutely. Yep, thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Kelly. Next, we have Parks and Recreation. Director Ms. Whitmer. Mr. Robertson's trying this, too. Good morning, both of you.
Good morning.
Look at those T-shirts. Love it.
Best T-shirts ever.
We're actually here for two reasons. We want to inform the public of our solar eclipse preparations at county parks. It's very simple. All county parks, and some may know it as Cars Farm Park, Will Detmer Park, Flatwoods Park, Limestone Greenway, and Cars Farm Greenway, will be open. And for those who do not live here, they are free to come, to use. Our restrooms will be open, fully stocked. We have wonderful playgrounds. We are not renting shelters. We ask that everyone share. Share the picnic tables, share the shelters. We will have park staff at the, at Cars Farm Park and Flatwoods Park to assist on that day, which is Monday, April 8. And at Cars Farm Park, there is no athletics scheduled. We have no recreational programs scheduled. So, maybe for the local folks, it might be best to stay home and enjoy the eclipse at your home, because, you know, you may get stuck in traffic for 10 hours. Indiana University Memorial Stadium's having a big Hoosier cosmic celebration. If you want to participate there, they're selling tickets, they're gonna have food trucks. I would prepare 10- to 15-hour event. It's kind of like a really big tailgate, I suspect. But, you know, if you don't have anything to do that day, it might be something really fun to go to IU and to Memorial Stadium. But we're also here, John's here, gonna talk to you about our lovely solar eclipse T-shirts that we have.
Yeah, I'm gonna share my screen real quick. I think, at this point, everybody has seen these T-shirts a couple times. But our foundation is selling these T-shirts on our website, which can be seen on the screen right here. And we just wanted to show everybody where, on the website, these could be found. So, first off, the URL for our foundation site is www.monroeparksfoundation.org. That will send you to the homepage of the website. From there, you go to the store in the upper right-hand corner, and you'll see a wide variety of color variations. My personal favorite is blue. We have found that if you select your size first and then your color, it'll default to whatever color you've picked. So, they have a couple creative descriptions for the certain colors, so we found it helpful to find your size first.
And not every size has every color. You can have it then print in the back, like I like, or the front, like John wants. This is a large, mine's a medium. And the colors are a little bizarre, even though this looks blue, this is called teal. Even though mine looks green, it's called dusty. And as I say, my favorite, I love this one. This is called Orchard. And if you notice, there's a little bat on it, and everyone keeps asking us, why a bat? And I say, why not? Bats like to come out at night. It's not a cat, it's not a dog, it's not a cow, it's a bat. It's for fun.
And the color of the glasses changed with the color of the T-shirt, which is really fun.
Or on and off. Yeah, it's just interesting.
Very cool.
It's just a lot of fun for our Monroe County Parks and Recreation Foundation. We want everyone to be safe on the solar eclipse day and have a T-shirt.
View it in style.
View it in style.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Oh, and I want to point, Commissioner Githens, looks like she is sporting.
She's wearing hers, yes. She is wearing hers today.
Look at that one. Her, yeah, she, her and John are just like they're matching. Any other questions?
No, thanks for bringing the information, and thanks for the information on the eclipse and what's planned and what's not. It's very helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Building Department, Mr. LaRue. Good morning.
Morning, Commissioners. Bob LaRue, Monroe County Building Department, here to re, to share information on our year-end report for the Building Department. Just want to talk a bit about what the numbers in here mean and answer any questions that you may have. Start early on here in the report with our licensing and registration program. Approximately 200 or so licensed electricians, about 60 licensed plumbers in the county. The registration fees that we collected from the program are $52,475. Program's important for us. It verifies competence in what folks are doing in the field. We check all of our permits against appropriate sign-offs and confirm that qualified people are doing the work in the county. The next sheet of the report talks a little bit about the total number of permits that were issued in 2023. There were 329 commercial permits, ranging in all scales from commercial electric permits to large apartment buildings, about 1,492 residential permits. That would be residential electric permits all the way to new homes, including remodels, additions, and accessory structures. The Building Department fees for 2023 collected were $428,816.61. As part of a service for the Planning Department in Monroe County, we collect the Planning Department, the ILP, fees for residential properties only. This allows folks doing work on their homes to just come into the county one time and pay for their permit versus paying at the Planning Department and then coming over and paying at the Building Department as well. Through the inter-local agreement with the City of Bloomington, we collect Planning Department fees for City of Bloomington Planning Department, and monthly, we remit fees to the city. Total collected in 2023 by the Building Department was $546,864.56. $40,950 was on behalf of the Monroe County Planning Department, and $77,097.95 was collected on behalf of the City of Bloomington. The next page in the report is talking about the number of residential units that were constructed in the county. Starting in '22, we were able to refine that information to the number of units that were built in the city and the number of units built in the county. Total units for 2023, single-family homes, these are, these are new units, right? Not remodels, just new homes, 158. Manufactured housing, which would include manufactured housing comes on a, on a frame, and modular homes, which are built in a factory and then placed on a site-built foundation. We had 15 of those, eight duplexes, and for 2023, there were 234 new apartment units that were created. That is not all of the number of apartment units that were applied for in 2023. We've been able to issue some permits early this year that were applied for in 2023, and so we'll add about 170 units to that. I suspect that it's just a lull in apartment construction. Already this year, we have about 15 new apartment buildings that have been applied for. I'm sorry, I don't know the total number of dwelling units in those, those buildings off the top of my head. The, the next page just kind of breaks down the distribution of fees a little in a chart form and has some historical data going back to 2006, so we can kind of compare what the trends are. I'm sure you'll notice that 2017 through '21 were, were kind of extraordinarily high years for us, very busy years. 2023 is down a little bit from that, so. And then the other two pages kind of just share the historical data of, of what we have remitted to the planning departments over the years. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that you may have about the report.
Thank you so much. Appreciate the information, and it was nice to have it sent on email earlier to review it first. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yes, I was wondering, and you may not know this right off the top of your head.
Answers are good.
How many of the duplexes were in the city and in the county?
I do happen to know that.
Very good.
Eight, all, all eight of them were in the city this year.
Thank you.
Commissioner Githens?
The report was very straightforward, and I appreciate the clarity.
Thank you. Yeah, and I noticed that, just trend-wise, that last, last year was a lower year in terms of the number of permits overall, but it was proportionate. So, it was, you know, city-county proportionate to population in 2022, 2023, and so that's an interesting, an interesting thing to consider. I may have some questions about specific developments, so I'll just send those to you on email.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you all. Have a great day.
Appreciate you. Thanks. Thanks to your staff as well. Good work. Any other departments have?
Just real quick. I, I have to say, I am super proud of the people who work at the Building Department. They, they work very hard to, to be timely, to do things the right way. They work very hard for the community. I could not be more proud of the people that work in the department, so, thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, any other department updates? Okay, seeing none, we will now open the floor for public comment. This is public comment for items that are not on our agenda. We ask that each person limit their comment to three minutes. Please provide your name and your county of residence, and you may come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room or raise your hand on Teams. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to our next item, please.
Move approval of the minutes from February 21, 2024, and for the executive session of January 23, 2023. Oh, sorry, that should have been 2024.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
All right, we have a motion, and we have a second. Comments, corrections, or edits? Commissioner Githens?
Yes, corrections to the executive session minutes. I'd like to have it noted that Sheriff Marte, Chief Deputy Phil Parker, Jail Commander Kyle Gibbons, and Corey Grass, our transition director, were also at that meeting.
Any other corrections? Okay, all right. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on approval of minutes for February 21, 2024, and January 23, 2024, executive session?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move approval of the claims docket accounts payable February 28, 2024.
We have a motion, and we have a second, and we have Auditor Bree Gregory joining us. Good morning.
Good morning. The accounts payable claims docket for February 28, 2024 totals $6,397,517.11. This includes all emergency claims and adjustments.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Githens?
No, thank you.
All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. Seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on approval of claims docket accounts payable February 28, 2024?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
All right, thank you so much. All right, we will now move on to, there aren't any reports, so we will now move on to new business, please.
Move approval of Resolution 2024-08 Financial Solutions Group Agreement. Fund name, county general, fund number 1,000, in an amount not to exceed $28,000.
Second. We have a motion, and we have a second, and we have Ms. Turner King joining us to tell us all about it. Good morning.
Let's try that again. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
This is actually a contract, not a resolution. The resolution included in the packet is what council used to approve the contract to have me bring it to you today for consideration. But the contract is with Financial Services Group. It's to provide services that include general financial advisory services to the county for the year of 2024, and also a three-year projection for county finances for '25, '26, and '27, which will assist the council in forming short-term and long-term goals.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
No, thanks.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
This make, makes a ton of sense because that long-range forecasting is so important for everything that we do, so this looks like a good, a good agreement. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Okay, seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the Financial Solutions Group Agreement?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, next item, please.
Move approval of contract with Bluestone LLC. Fund name, county general, and parks non-reverting. Fund numbers, 1,000, 1178, and 1179, in an amount not to exceed $30,000.
Second. We have a motion, and we have a second. Ms. Whitmer?
Yes, this is with Bluestone. It is not to exceed $30,000. The agreement expires July 1, 2025. And the reason why we need to use Bluestone is that if we have very large trees or a storm comes by, they have the equipment and the personnel that can help us get these trees down safely, especially on a greenway and things like that. But I also want to note that the no felling of trees greater than five inches at DBH, which is four, four-and-a-half feet tall, while Indiana bats may be present from April 1st to September 30th, which means the public, if, if, these are guidelines, they can fell trees from October 1st through March 31st. And the reason why is that the U.S. Fish and Wildlife has reclassified the northern long-eared bat as endangered, which means it now faces extinction. And people go, well, why shall I, why should I care? Well, bats are critical to the healthy functioning of natural areas and contribute at least $3 billion annually to the U.S. agriculture economy through pest control and pollination. So, we need to protect our bats as much as possible, and with this contract, I always always like to bring, you know, the public so they can notice what's going on with the bats in Indiana.
Good point, thank you. Thanks for all that information. It was, it was something I'd been hearing was coming, so it was, it was good to see the, the details. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I, I'm pleased to see this contract because I know these things come up kind of unexpectedly and to come to us every time. To deal with it must, well, it takes a bit of time. I'd also like to say, emphasize the importance of bats to agriculture. So many people have kind of lost track of the fact that there's a whole lot more than plants, people, and soil involved in agriculture. And a lot of the creatures that we choose to think of as being unnecessary or even unpleasant, it's very much not the case for them.
Exactly. And with our, you know, we want to make sure we don't take any trees that we don't have to. We, when we do take trees, most likely than not, we leave them on-site. So, we try to be very, very careful, and we try to plant trees every year.
Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
I want to point out to people that it's, that the northern long-eared bat is facing extinction partly because of white-nose syndrome, that it's fungus that's attacking them. But, yes, they are very important, and they actually help with mosquito control. So, I'm a, I'm a bat fan, yeah.
And hey, I have my bat here.
That's right. Got him on the shirts now. It's like the official mascot of Monroe County.
We call him MC Bat.
Yes, I like it, I like it. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on Bluestone LLC agreement?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Thank you. Thanks again for being here. Next item, please.
Move approval of the MOU with Crimson Security. Fund names, special purpose lit for juvenile probation and public safety lit for probation. Fund numbers, 1114 and 1170, in a total amount of $20,560.
Second. We have a motion, and we have a second, and we have Ms. Brady joining us. Good morning.
Good morning. I don't have to push any buttons or anything with the new system?
No.
That's cool.
It's magical.
Very magical.
And we can hear you, which is even more magical.
Snazzy, wow. I'm Linda Brady, Chief Probation Officer for the Monroe Circuit Court. Monroe County government has been contracting with Alliance Security Incorporated and the other ASI since 2014 to provide safety and security services at the Community Corrections Office, which some people here know as the Johnson Hardware Building. And the security services are just during our high-traffic, early-morning day reporting hours, which are from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. So, we also have the other ASI there running the magnetometer and the X-ray machine during those hours. But we tend to have between 150 to 200 people who show up for day reporting during those hours, so it's a very congested time of day. And so, the, the Alliance Security has provided that extra layer of security to help manage the traffic in the alley, make sure there's not any kind of criminal activity going on outside, or fighting, or that sort of thing, because sometimes that sort of thing had happened in the past. One of the primary duties that the Alliance Security has performed, they hired off-duty state, sworn Indiana state troopers, and they served warrants. So, we tend to have a lot of people show up for our, that office who have, are wanted on warrant, and the state troopers would effect the arrest and transport them to the Monroe County Jail, which saved our sheriff's deputies from having to come during their high-busy time, during commute hours, from having to, to do that service. But we were just recently advised that Alliance Security has ended the contract with us, and it's because they can't find people to work. They, and for good reason, in that state troopers did get a very significant raise this year and don't necessarily have the need to work a second job or security job, so that has caused them to not be able to fulfill the contract. So, we did seek what were some options, and we found an option with Crimson Security. Crimson Security, who contracts with off-duty sworn law enforcement officers to provide safety and security at the Community Corrections Office, and they would also agree to serve warrants and transport the arrestees to the Monroe County Jail. And this would be from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m., Monday through Friday, during those high-volume hours. So, thank you. Any questions?
Great explanation. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
I appreciate the fact that Ms. Brady and her staff are being proactive about this.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I think this is a much-needed service, and I'm glad that you found a way to continue it.
We are, too.
Yeah, that must have been a little worrisome for a moment there. So, thank you, thank you for maintaining peace and order in that timeframe. All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. None, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the MOU with Crimson Security?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, 3 to 0.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next item, please.
Move approval of the agreement with Monroe County Fair Association for Safe Place Advertising. Fund name, Safe Place, fund number 9103, in amount of $175.
Second. We have a motion, and we have a second. Ms. Brown?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Jessica Brown with the YSB, and we are just here to do an advertisement with the local fairgrounds. It's a new endeavor for us, but we thought it, we're there all week anyways. We always have agreement with them to be there during the fair and hand out Safe Place promos and education to the kids, and thought this would be a great opportunity. They estimate about 30,000 people visit the fairgrounds during the week of the fair, so we thought it'd be a good opportunity to get a local advertisement here and do some fun, like, social media stuff, if kids will find the bench, take a picture, you know, win some prizes, stuff like that, for a total of $175, and it'll be good for two years.
Great.
So, really great price.
That is a really good price. Excellent. All right. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I'm just pleased to hear, hear you about this, and curious, will you have, I believe it's gonna go on a bench. And curious, will you have, I believe it's going to go on a bench?
Yes, yep, it'll be on a bench, one of the long benches. And we're hoping to put it where, close to the carnival, where adults and kids can see it. But I'm working with them on that, on the placement.
I was just wondering if you were going to have it there in time for the eclipse, which is a time when we expect a lot of people?
Yes, I asked about that and apparently they put them on just before the fair and that they'll run from July for two years of that. And then we had the option to renew. But I did, I was thinking that.
Well, thank you for thinking of it.
No problem.
Commissioner Githens, comments, questions?
Well, like my colleagues, I've been out at the fair where you are out there several evenings in a row and you see exactly the same kids. And so this is a chance, hopefully, that this will sink in with some of the kids that are out there, some of the fair kids. So I appreciate this, thank you.
I think it's really smart as well because we do get a lot of youth from surrounding counties, but our program is, covers surrounding counties. And so I think that's a really, really neat way that that meshes, so kudos.
Thank you.
All right, let's see if there's any public comment on this item. Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in the Nat U Hill Room. All right, seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, will you call the role on the agreement with Monroe County Fair Association for Safe Place Advertising?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Thank you.
Right, thank you so much. All right, next item, please.
Move approval of Correctional Center Collective Bargaining Agreement.
We have a motion and we have a second, Mr. Cockrell.
Yes, this is an agreement that we've been working on, it seems like, for at least a year. And so I think it's, it's nice to be able to bring this to you. And we did have this on an earlier agenda. We made some changes to kind of help clarify a few of, some of the language, including we don't use split shifts anymore in our facility. So we took out languages involving that. We are not currently contemplating any kind of Wagner or Wan Shealy review of these salaries. So we took out the language regarding that. So, and there are a couple of, a couple of other kind of minor typographical kind of items that we took care of from when we put it on last time. But basically, the big change, the big shift in this is twofold. One is it places all of our specialty pay into an hourly rate. And that is because we feel it's required by the Fair Labor Standards Act to include that in their overtime rate. So to make that calculation easy to both do and confirm that we are paying the correct rate, that was kind of the largest monetary change. We did have the sergeant's pay increased a little bit so that it would be halfway between a corporal and a captain's pay to kind of keep the hierarchy there. And the other, the other third big one is we used to just give all our, all our employees a shift bonus, or not a shift bonus, but a uniform allowance. And I believe that our cover sheet says 1,600 and it's, I believe it's only 1,250 for the jail. The 1,600 is a remnant from the Sheriff's Department. So it's 1,250. We used to give that to everyone, including new hires. The cost of a fully-equipped jailer or this applies to the merit deputies is, is, is not contemplated. That that's the amount to keep it maintained so that they can continue to have that stuff. So this contract reflects what we did with the Sheriff's Department, which was we just give them three uniforms and then some of the accessories. And that's what they get the first year and then every year thereafter, they would get that uniform allowance. So those are kind of the major changes from the last one. The, again, the shift to especially pay to hourly rate and this uniform are kind of more major changes. The other one's just kind of a, hey, looking at the scale and making sure it makes sense kind of a change.
All right, thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Githens?
I'm just trying to get back through the contract itself to ensure that it says the 1,250 annual clothing allowance since the cover sheet was wrong. So, Mr. Cockrell, do you know where that is in the contract?
I am, it is on, well, page 47, it's 1,200. And there are certain correctional officers, or there are officers, some of the staff who has to work in the jail but aren't necessarily the correction officers, they have a lower amount in that of 350. Those are things like the cooks and those kind of, particularly the cooks and those kind of staffs that we don't expect the same wear and tear on their uniforms as, as the jail officers themselves.
Okay, so that, yeah, I see it now, the 1,200. Thank you.
Commissioner Jones, comments, questions?
No, I don't.
So I appreciate everyone who took the time to, to work through this and it appears that there is widespread agreement on this. Okay, excellent. All right, let's see if there's any public comments on this item. Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Okay, seeing none, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the role on the Correctional Center Collective Bargaining Agreement?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three to zero.
Right, thank you so much. Move on to the next item, please.
Move approval of Ordinance 2024-04 Waley PUD Outline Plan Amendment Number Two.
Second. We have a motion and we have a second and we have Mr. Smith joining us. I sent him some sort of last-minute-y questions, which he's, he's answered on email, thank you for that, just about how to corral all of this information together. So I look forward to seeing your revised presentation. Thank you so much, Mr. Smith, appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioners. I will get right into it here. Let me know if you can see my screen here. Okay, can you see that?
We can, yes.
Okay, perfect. So this request is for a Planned Unit Development Outline Plan Amendment. And this is for the Waley PUD. And this is to allow for the filling of all sinkholes on the western portion of the property for the after-the-fact filling of two sinkhole conservancy areas, also commonly known as SEAs, and to add one new use to the permitted use list, which is boat and RV storage. The purpose of this request is to bring the property into compliance with the Waley PUD ordinance and to resolve enforcement case AC-22-21. Without amending the PUO, the site will remain in violation of the Waley PUD ordinance. And just some background information here. In 1997, the property was rezoned from light industrial to a PUD. The PUD rezon closely relates to the light industrial uses at the time, which was the inclusion of cut stone and stone products to accommodate the use at the time, which was known as 3D Stone Company. In 1998, this PUD was amended to change a condition that moved the area of the permitted grading further west, but not to exceed the delineated line located on Exhibit 3 of the packet of the PUD ordinance. This change included language specifically prohibiting development within 25 feet of the sinkhole conservancy area. The planning commission at the time added the following language at, at the time of approval. And that language is that the petitioner submit drainage information required for the drainage board to the planning department as part of the development plan file and that no further development west of the demarcated areas of disturbance as shown on Exhibit 3 be enabled except through the outline plan amendment process. So essentially, that's what they're doing now is going through this outline plan amendment process. So in 2014, KNS Roll Off purchased the property and received a development plan and land use certificate. That development plan, however, did not include disturbance within 25 feet of the sinkhole conservancy areas. And the years from 2015 to 2019, grading over what is known as Sinkhole A and fill over what is known as Sinkhole B are evident per aerial imagery. Fast forward to 2022, use termination was submitted to staff to inquire about convenience storage, which is no longer pursued by the petitioner. By June, an enforcement case was opened due to the fill in the sinkhole. And on August 24th, a grading permit was submitted, which is still active, which is pending approval of this outline plan amendment. In 2023, this outline plan amendment was submitted to staff. It was taken to the April 5th Drainage Board and the board reviewed and provided comments. And then in January of 2024, the planning commission reviewed and voted seven to zero to forward staff's recommendation to the county commissioners. These are aerial imagery over time. So in 2014, this is the year that KNS Roll Off purchased the property. It appears to be in compliance with the Waley PUD ordinance. And then in 2016 and 2019, the aerial images show significant land disturbance on the western portion of the property. And as a reminder, the PUD, the Waley PUD ordinance strictly prohibited that. So we have, at the bottom left-hand corner, we have a significant land disturbance over what is known as Sinkhole A. And then at the top left, we have the significant land disturbance over Sinkhole B. And then 2020, 2021, and 2022, those activities actually increased in severity. And this is pretty much what the site looks like today. So that latest development plan that was approved in 2014 is shown here on Figure 1. And that's on the right-hand side. And then on the left-hand side, we have the current site. And then I've kind of delineated what, where those sinkholes are in relation to the land disturbance activities. So according to our records, there were no grading permits that were issued for these land disturbing activities. So therefore, the filling in and disturbance of these two sinkholes is a violation of the Waley PUD ordinance. And then, of course, a separate enforcement letter was set out in June of 2022. So also attached in the packet are the reports from the Hydrogeology Incorporated and the Indiana Department of Environmental Management. Just a really brief summary here of what they found. So the Hydrogeology Incorporated report found no obvious impacts from the existing lay-down area for parking in Sinkhole A. Sinkhole B had been identified to have been partially filled with pulverized concrete, but no obvious impacts were observed during the field study. They did note that due to the elevation of the fill site being higher than the surrounding properties, those properties could face surface runoff from the site. The study did note that the groundwater flow from the site flows into Leonard Springs. The Indiana Department of Environmental Management report identified most, or much of the site to contain unpainted concrete, some of which had black plastic sticking out, noted as likely being the linear material in the bed of the roll-off. However, because no loose black plastic or concrete material was observed directly within any sinkhole, their investigation was closed out with no violations having been observed. And this is just an image from the Hydrogeology Incorporated report. And they've got kind of outlined in pink here where the site is for KNS Roll Off. And then they've got these arrows here and that is pointing to where the groundwater is flowing into. And down here is Leonard Springs. These are just some site photos performed by staff visit early last summer. So the photo on the left-hand side is Sinkhole A. That's facing northwest. This photo on the right-hand side is also Sinkhole A, that's facing north. So they are currently storing what appears to be vehicles here. And then we've got photos of Sinkhole B on the left-hand side facing west and on the right-hand side facing east. This is also a, some photos from Sinkhole B. This is where that pulverized concrete was observed in the reports. Here we see the petitioner's current site plan on the left-hand side that was submitted staff. And then on the right-hand side, we have the site plan that was approved in 2014. And what was approved in 2014 is currently what the standard they are held to. So the one on the left-hand side, of course, has not been approved, pending approval of this PUO request. These are boat and RV storage definitions that were provided to staff. I am happy to go through them, but because they're very wordy, I'm going to try my best to kind of summarize them. So here, the petitioner is identifying or defining what a recreational vehicle is. They've also went further and identified other types of recreational vehicles, whether that's a travel trailer or pickup camper or motorized home. And then they also go on to define what boat storage means to them and then self-limiting conditions that they are also proposing here numbered 1, 2, and 3. And these are also in the ordinance request in the staff packet. So I discussed with Julie yesterday about making sure the ordinances are clear and what you're voting on. So hopefully, I've done a good job here. So I've kind of color-coded things and separated it. So we have Ordinance 2024-04A. So on January 16th, 2024, the planning commission voted seven to zero to forward planning staff's positive and negative recommendations subject to the MS4 Coordinator's reports. So 2024-04A represents those positive recommendations that the planning commission is forwarding to the commissioners. And I can go through these. So the first recommendation references the adding the use of boat and RV storage only in the allocated area per the petitioner's submitted site plan, and that is Exhibit 2, due to its compatibility with the comprehensive plan. Staff recommendation number 2 is referring to the after-the-fact disturbance of designated Sinkhole B in its current state with no further disturbance and subject to the Hydrogeology Incorporated and the Indiana Department of Environmental Management reports. Number 3, also positive recommendation for the after-the-fact disturbance of designated Sinkhole A in its current state with no further disturbance and subject to the Hydrogeology Incorporated and Indiana Department of Environmental Management reports. Number 4, for allowing storage in the area outside of designated Sinkhole A. Ordinance 2024-04B represents those negative recommendations that the planning commission voted seven to zero to forward to the county commissioners. So that recommendation, number 5, was a negative recommendation to the county commissioners to allow for the proposed additional seven feet of fill to be placed on Sinkhole B. And then recommendation number 6, staff recommends forwarding a negative recommendation to the county commissioners to allow for any new disturbance or storage of materials within any of the sinkholes located on the property as requested in the petitioner's outline plan statement. Of course, staff had also recommended conditions of approval. So these approval, or these conditions include that the petitioner comply with the drainage board conditions stated at the April 5th, 2023 meeting, including bio-retention design criteria for the site should include release rates aligned with the critical watershed levels and use amended soils and deep-rooted vegetation with limited maintenance requirements for bio-retention infrastructure. The second condition was that the petitioner create a definition which includes boat and RV storage, and that was provided to staff as of January 30th, 2024. And hopefully this illustration I've created for you kind of helps identify exactly where we're talking about in terms of our recommendations. So in blue, we have the boat and RV storage. This was forwarded as a positive recommendation. And that is seen here according to the petitioner's submitted site plan. Number two, we have an orange, and that is for the after-the-fact filling of sinkhole B. Also a positive recommendation. Number three, we have in red is for the after-the-fact disturbance of sinkhole A. That was also a positive recommendation. Number four, in purple, we have the storage outside of sinkhole A. Also a positive recommendation. Number five, we have the additional seven feet of fill in sinkhole B, and that's on the right-hand side here. This was a negative recommendation that was forwarded. And then number six, we have in black because this includes all three sinkholes on the property, A, B, and C. And that is for further disturbance and storage within all sinkhole conservancy areas on the property. And that was forwarded with a negative recommendation to the county commissioners. Does anybody have any questions?
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Smith. That really was incredibly helpful and I appreciate the way that you organize the information. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones at this time?
Yeah, for the RV and boat storage is, I'm not exactly sure what conditions those might be. Can they be? Is there a situation that will make sure that nothing leaks from these vehicles? Or anything that does leak is contained?
Yeah, so I can't speak to specifics, but I do know that the MS4 coordinator, Kelsey Patonia, she had stated that she would hold them to the, her requirements for critical watershed areas. I don't know precisely what all of that entails. But whenever they file for a development plan, which is what they will have to do pending this approval of the PLO, she stated that she would do a thorough review, and she would hold them to the strict requirements of the critical watershed areas. And that would include, you know, any things to do with runoff or any sort of soil or land disturbance.
If I understand correctly, there, you said there were no bulldozing permits or anything?
That's correct. There were no grading permits that were issued for the land disturbing activities.
So this is a a group, I guess, who didn't get the required permits, did something that was pretty illegal. And now we are supposed to count on them to stay in compliance. I'm just kind of wondering why anyone thinks they would?
Yeah, so as of right now, the only, so the site remains, you know, out of compliance with the zoning ordinance. And there, this is a way to bring that property into compliance with the conditions that there will be no further disturbance. And this is only subject to the Indiana Department of Environmental Management reports and the Hydrogeology reports. It's a, this is, this is otherwise an enforcement case, so.
Yes, well, one of the things that really disturbs me about this is the actions they took were unlikely to cause any big problems for them is only other people who suffer from what they've done. There's a lot about this that I'm kind of uncomfortable about.
Yeah, I hear that. I hear that. Commissioner Githens, comments or questions at this point?
Well, like Commissioner Jones, I'm skeptical about how we keep them from additional, doing additional disturbances. But I wanted to ask Mr. Smith if he would go back to the last kind of map or slide that he was showing and show me where the RV and boat storage is compared to the entrance of the facility off of the State Road 45?
So we have here number one in blue, so that is where that storage is taking place. And I don't know if you can see my cursor, but we follow it down here. This is State Road 45, so this is their entrance. So they, they enter here and then it goes all the way back to the rear part of the property.
Okay, well, I was out there over the weekend, and they have RVs stored outside in an area that is not in the zone, the zone that you've marked as number one. They had at least three of them out there. I took pictures. And I, I also don't know, because I didn't, I didn't drive around to that part of their, their property. I don't know if, if that's a covered storage area or if it's just open ground, if it's a concrete pad. Can you enlighten us?
So for the purposes of this ordinance request, they would only be permitted to store the boat and RV storage in the area that's been designated by their engineer. So that is this area that's number one. So if you were to vote to approve that, they would need to ensure that that storage is allocated here and not elsewhere on the property.
Well, it certainly is right now elsewhere on the property along with, you showed, I think, some semi-trailer there also. And that's what they had at the property too. And I don't know if that's allowed under the current zoning.
So I don't, what was being stored? So essentially, this is focused on these SEAs. So I would have to, I would have to go back and kind of read through exactly where that storage area. Their engineer or the petitioner themselves might have some insights on that.
And just, yeah, and thank you for that. And I agree that this, this site is woefully out of compliance in many, in many ways, which is disturbing. But perhaps it would be useful for area number four there in purple. If, Mr. Smith, if you could explain what that storage outside of sinkhole A, what is stored there? Or what's permitted to be stored there?
Yeah, so I was trying to look at their site plan here. So I know that they store materials for the county. I believe that's fill. That is what's being shown here in this kind of a small rectangular area here. And then on the left-hand side, I'm not entirely sure what they would be storing there. What is being currently stored there are those semi-trailers. And I believe some trucks as well. They're kind of roll-off trucks, so it's not, you know, we don't have necessarily like a specific storage use in mind. It's just that it can be used for storage so long as it's outside of sinkhole A.
It looks like there are some pipes and stuff that are being stored there too from the pictures I took.
Did you have other questions at this moment, Commissioner Githens, or can we move on to hear from the petitioner?
Happy to move on. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that, does a petitioner, petitioner's representative have information for us?
This is Daniel with Bynum, Fannion Associates. Can you hear me?
Go ahead, Mr. Butler.
Okay. Yeah, so we had presented this at length, and you're correct that this was a case that was heard in depth at the plant commission and has been going on for over a year now to try to get this site into compliance with what had happened there with filling of some sinkholes. And so we had done different studies to make sure and, and see what was out there now as compared to, you know, making sure that this doesn't happen again on the site and making sure that the site is in order. And there's no more kind of putting, you know, like piping, for instance, or different types of trailers in spots that they're not supposed to be. And so that's what we've been working with our owner here on and cleaning up the site and working with the hydrogeology to see how, what has happened, working with IDAM to make sure that this is clean, that, you know, this, this was approved, you know, by them. But also, we'd like to put in some measures, some new measures to clean the water before it enters sinkhole areas. And so that'll be part of the development plan process next. And I, I believe that primarily the, the storage upfront will be for containers that people would, you know, have at their sites and bring to, back to the sites. And those would be, you know, cleaned or brought out. And in that sinkhole A, I believe there's no wish to have any more leaking-type vehicles, that those would be placed in the designated areas. But I believe also Keith Klein with KNS rolloff is on this call as well, and he can clarify. But I'm here for any other questions or I can respond as necessary.
Okay, thank you so much. Let's see if there's any other information from the petitioner from KNS rolloff. I don't know if you want to add anything? I don't see. Maybe Mr. Williams can.
Good morning, commissioners.
All right.
I about made it up here. I'm glad Daniel showed up. Talked with Keith. He has KNS rolloff. He's reviewed the ordinances that have been prepared and submitted to you and is in complete agreement with those.
Okay, great. Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak as a, as the petitioner or representative of the petitioner? I think we do have some questions for the petitioner, and I could start with Commissioner Githens.
Yes, why are the RVs parked, placed outside what was designated on this map?
I'm sorry, my name's Keith Klein with KNS rolloff. I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Why are some of the RVs parked outside of the area that you're designating on this map for the storage? And would you tell us about, more about the proposed storage area? Is it covered? Is it concrete pad? Tell us about it, please.
All the storage area for the RVs and boats are on concrete pad and none are stored under roof. And all are currently licensed and, and being used.
But there are some being parked, that are currently parked outside of that area?
Still on, on a hard surface up on top where we keep our trucks ourselves. But they do come and go. They move in and out, and they do move around because of some tight quarters.
But they're not in the area that you've designated for their storage, is what I'm saying.
Okay, there's, as far as, how many are out of compliance?
Yes.
And they appear to be parked on grass.
Yes.
There are none parked on grass, no, ma'am.
I got a picture of it.
Now, as far as.
Parked next to a gravel area on the grass.
Are you talking about the boat and RVs or?
There, there are RVs.
Now, we do have a gravel lot on top that has a couple on top of it, but it's not on the grass. I mean, forgive me, but, I mean, I am there every day. I don't remember seeing anything on, parked on grass.
Maybe, may, may I step in, Commissioner Githens? Maybe I can ask this question in a different way that might be helpful. And let's see if we can get the information that we're looking for. I think we're looking for the same thing. So there is a section, if, if Mr. Smith could put that map back up with the designated, with the colors designating areas. There is a section, there it is, perfect, thank you. The blue section, boat and RV storage. We would anticipate, correct, correct me if I'm wrong, only if you're, if you are storing any boats or RVs anywhere on this property, they would only be in that blue area marked one. Is that correct?
Yes, we can't store them there. We aren't currently getting some moved out.
I'm not asking that question. I'm, I'm asking the question that you agree that the only place boats or RVs will sit on this property is in area one that's in blue on the map?
Yes, well, I will agree.
Okay.
Yes.
Now, for area four, storage is nebulous. What are you storing in area four or elsewhere on the property? Does it include rolloff bins, containers, semi-trailers?
Rolloff bins, and there are semi-trailers in the lower full of storage.
In the lower?
In, in four, yes.
In four?
Yes.
Okay. Does that help you, Commissioner Githens?
I, I just, there were also semi-trailers up in the higher area too. And I'm sorry, the pictures I sent of the lower level, that's actually sinkhole A. I didn't have the map in front of me to correctly identify those. But there are also the, the pipe and stuff and some concrete. Looks like barriers that were stored out there. That was up Sunday.
Yes.
And that kind of thing would be in area four, which is purple on this map? Okay, so I think, I think, Commissioner Githens, I think the questions should be, what will be stored in area four and what will be stored outside of area one and four rather than what's there now? Because this, this isn't, this petition hasn't passed yet. So does that make sense to focus on other things that you think that may be stored there or are stored there that are incompatible with this, with this, this land and its particular environmental sensitivities?
Well, I, as I understand it, that RV storage is not currently allowed there, and they, they're actually doing it. So I want to know how quickly things will come into compliance.
Okay, I think that's a valid question. Can you address that?
Yes, we do not have any contracts with any of our people that are storing RVs there.
But that doesn't, so what does that mean, that you can just tow them off?
Well, we could ask them to move or leave at any time, yes.
Okay.
That doesn't, that still doesn't answer the question.
Right, the question. Right, the question is, when would they be moved to area one if this passes? When would you come into compliance?
Immediately.
I'm sorry?
Immediately.
Immediately?
Yes.
So you must have access to keys or the ability to tow or move them?
Yeah.
Got it, thank you. Does that answer the question, Commissioner Githens?
Yes, thank you. I guess the other question was, is in line also with what Commissioner Jones raised, and I had already made a note about this too, is how, how are we going to be assured that there won't be additional disturbance around those sinkholes?
Do you want to, would you like to address that? How will you ensure that there will be no more disturbance around these sinkholes?
I can assure that as an owner. I can also put that in writing.
Okay. But what ha- what happened previously that led to the filling of sinkhole B and the disturbance of sinkhole A?
Well, we didn't do any survey and didn't realize we were getting that close to a sinkhole as far as being in the setback. But I don't believe we've actually gotten into the actual sinkhole itself.
Well, there was fill in B. B was filled, so somehow that happened, right?
Mm-hmm, yes. And we did remove some topsoil and put some stone down, so we'll be able to store in that lower area. That did no fill in number four. In area of number four and three.
How, how important is it for you on this property to be able to store semi-trailers long-term?
Well, it's a big open property, so, I mean, it's, it's nice to have that use and there's obviously a need for it.
Um.
And once again, everything is in good repair.
Yeah, you, you are in a, as you know, I hope you know now, that you are in a highly sensitive area. And whatever goes on in this property, there are three sinkholes, uh, that may or may not, uh, I'm sorry, two sinkholes that may or may not be sending, um, um, fluids, liquids, leaks, water, um, uh, water collected in a, uh, roll-off bin that has had garbage in it and is empty, but the water's collecting there and it's going, all of that goes into the watershed. It goes into the sinkhole and it goes into the watershed. And you're probably impacting people in Lawrence County. And you are impacting people in Monroe County. So, um, I, I, I had the same concerns as my colleagues about the leaking of fluids from boats and RVs. Uh, it could be antifreeze, it could be oil, it could be gas, it could be, could be so many things. And now if you want to add in, uh, semi-trailers, um, I feel like that's another level of something else that can leak, something else that can go wrong. Ms. Thetonia will work with this group, whatever we approve or don't approve, will work with this company, Mr. Klein, to ensure that there's a plan in place to manage all of this. My concern is that we don't have semi-trailer storage included in this outline plan amendment. And, um, Mr. Smith, is that something we would have to add in here at this point?
Uh, um, I would have to go back, because there's actually a very long list, maybe I should have put it in here, of already permitted uses and they're all light industrial, so, like warehousing and storage would be a permitted use currently. Um, we can, of course, go back and review that just to ensure, but essentially that has been what's been stored there since the late 90s.
Yeah, okay. Um, yeah. Okay, um. I think one of the things that happens, that's, and I'll just share this with you, that's frustrating for us, is that we are being asked to, um, forgive an act that's already happened. And that's, that's difficult for any of us to do because we want to encourage people to do the right thing beforehand, so that we're not having to, um, approve after-the-fact disturbance and, and all of that. So I'm sure you can understand our concerns here to make sure that, that whatever happens, we need to make sure that, that all of this is followed. But I think, um, uh, Mr. Smith, if you could look, if you could look, um, at the original PUD to see if, um, semi-trailer storage is already approved, um, while we talk with, um, members of the public and we talk through this, if you could look for that while we do that, I would appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Um, so we'll, we'll check that out. I, I do believe that the roll-off bins are approved, if I remember correctly. I just, I read this, I, I went back and looked at the original when we first got this at Plan Commission, and so I just want to make sure that we're, we're covering everything. Okay, so, um, let's go ahead and hear from any members, um, of the public who wish to speak in favor of this petition. Can raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U-Hill. Okay, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this petition? Come to the podium in Nat U-Hill or raise your hand on teams. Each, um, remonstrance will have three minutes to speak. Okay, all right, seeing none on either side, um, I don't know if you would like to take a quick, uh, 10-minute recess to give Mr. Smith time to look that information up in the original PUD? Would you be amenable to that, Commissioner Githens? 10-minute recess?
Sure.
Okay, great.
Sure.
All right, um, we're going to take a quick recess and we will come back at 11:33 and hopefully by then, um, sorry to put Mr. Smith under the gun there, uh, hopefully by then we will have, um, uh, information on the original, um, PUD and I'll go back and see what I can research as well. All right, so we are going to be recessed for 10 minutes. We'll come back at 11:33. Uh, we are in recess. Okay, I'm going to call us, uh, back to order and check in with Planner, uh, Sean Smith. Uh, Mr. Smith, have you had any luck? Oh, Ms. Bierman, maybe you've had some luck doing a little research.
Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen for just a bit.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. So, let's see. When we had a use determination submitted, uh, when they were originally, um, interested in doing the, um, convenience storage, which they are no longer pursuing, um, we did make a use determination. Director Jellin said that this was a remote garbage and rubbish removal facility. Uh, and I feel like that the, what we would consider part of that use, and especially if we pull up the, um, definition for remote garbage rubbish removal facility, is, you know, it's, there's transport that's involved. And so I believe that, um, we would see those semi-trailers sort of being there as part of kind of accessory to that use. And I, I think that's something that we would expect to see there because they are taking like, you know, the concrete bins from construction sites and hauling those back when they're done and filled. So, um, which won't be, um, you know, they'll be having to transport that to a different location. They won't be able to use that location, uh, if, if those negative recommendations are not, you know, approved. So, it, the nature of their business may change to some degree, but they will still be most likely hauling and using these, um, bins and having to, to take those to sites and remove those and, and storing the trailers there, I think. That's what I would think, so.
Okay, I, I appreciate the interpretation. Let's see if my colleagues have any questions for you, Ms. Bierman, if you don't mind. Yeah, we need our captions back on, please, on our screen. Thank you so much, um. Thank you. Um, all right, uh, let's see, uh, Commissioner Githens, do you have questions, um, for Ms. Bierman?
Um, yeah, are there's, is there a specified place where then these semi-trailers should be stored? Um, because of?
Yeah, originally, we would not have expected any disturbance or anything, you know, on the western side of the property. So we would not, we would have expected everything to have been on the eastern half outside of those sinkholes. Uh, and it wasn't until we started doing the use determination and looking at the site that we saw the encroachment happen. So, what is presented to you today is to partially deal with the situation and get them into compliance, since we did see them disturb it. And frankly, to try to like, remove everything that's accumulated over the last 10 years from that site, maybe would be more detrimental environmentally than anything. Um, you know, the amount of, you know, gasoline and fuel and transport that it would take to remove that from site. Um, I think planning staff and, um, stormwater team kind of felt it best to leave it in place because it, at that level, was not going to have an impact on hydrology, so.
Okay.
Was that helpful? Were you able to hear me?
Yes, um. But that doesn't, I mean, I'm not talking about tearing up what they've done down there. I'm talking about whether or not it's safe to store those, um, semi-trailers in the lower level and maybe even the, the mono, um, bins too.
Right, I think.
Roll-off bins, sorry.
Yeah, the, I don't think we want to see storage in those sinkholes. That's why we made the recommend, the negative recommendation towards the disturbance and storage in the sinkholes. However, I think, um, that area four that was labeled in purple on there was something that we felt could still maybe be utilized. Um, it, it was something they were asking for. We didn't see a negative reason why they couldn't use that as storage, as long as they stayed within that area.
And, and the, the stor- the type of things that can be stored there? Uh, are you saying that you would be okay with what's, what they're, what they already have there?
Um, so Director Jellin was working more closely with this and she is not in the office today. Um, but from my understanding, I think, um, because that area was not designated as a sinkhole, we were going to treat it as just, you know, regular property and, and could likely have those semi-trailers and those, um, roll-off bins there. Sean might have some insights, since he had a lot more conversations about this site than, than I did with Jackie.
Yeah, and, um, that's why those recommend, our staff recommendations are subject to the MS4 Coordinator's report, so Kelsey Thetonia. So, um, nothing would be approved to be stored there if she wasn't okay with it being stored or if the petitioner didn't, you know, make the necessary adjustments to ensure that nothing else is being disturbed. There's no runoff into, you know, the sinkholes and then it gets transported downstream into Leonard Springs. So, you know, if they submitted a development plan, you know, we wouldn't approve anything without Kelsey's final approval.
And, and as a follow-up to that, um, I was going to actually ask about a, another condition, but as a, as a follow-up to that, could, do you think we need to be very clear and specific to create a condition that says the development plan, um, will note, um, the location of, um, areas of storage and indicate what, what may be stored on there? I just feel like, you know, you give an inch, you take a mile. Um, I, I just want to make sure that we have a plan at our office that is very specific, you know? Um, in this area, we may have empty semi-trailers or roll-off bins, but, um, and in this area, we will have, you know, stone and, uh, sand and concrete barricades and over, you know? I feel like we need that kind of granular attention for this property. And, um, I'm wondering if, if you all think in planning, whether or not we should try to come up with another condition so that this is, um, clearly addressed, so the petitioner and planning staff are all on the same page?
We could attempt to do that. I will say that during a development plan review, um, it is required that, you know, the uses on that site or for wherever areas are, whether it's a building or a storage yard, that does get very specifically labeled on the development plan. Um, so we will be kind of reviewing that. And if, when Kelsey's reviewing this and they didn't want to do buyer retention in a certain area, then maybe we would not allow those semi-trailers, um, to be stored there. So, you know, a lot of it will kind of, I think, come out during the development plan review.
Right.
But if you, if, if crafting another condition, um, might assist with the process, willing to work with you on that as well.
Okay, okay. So it's, you don't think an, another condition is necessary? Um, I know, I know that your staff and Ms. Thetonia, they're very thorough. Um, but I almost feel like it's not about our staff and Ms. Thetonia. I feel like it might be worth putting it out there for the petitioner so they have, um, a very clear understanding of what may or may not go in certain places on the property. I don't know.
Yeah, it's like one thing to delineate it on paper, uh, another thing to delineate it on the field, so, you know? And I know they have the equipment to move things around, those Jersey barriers that they're storing currently on site. You know, will those be moved for a positive reason or can they just be moved and relocated? I mean, it, it might just be that we just need to kind of keep tabs on them from time to time and make sure that we see compliance as being demonstrated at the site.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I would, I would be supportive of being active in, in re-inspecting and enforcing any issues immediately on this property in the future if this, if this passes. For me, that would be something I would, I would appreciate if staff would keep following up on this. Um, uh, does that, does that make sense, uh, to my colleagues to think about a condition which, um, developing a condition which includes a very, um, specific detailed map of what can be stored in particular areas on the property?
Yes.
All right, so Commissioner Jones is a yes. Would you be interested in pursuing that, Commissioner Githens?
Um, yes, and I also, um, am wondering if, if the areas that should not be encroached upon anymore, should just, we should ask the petitioner to put fences up so that it's not just him, it's any future owner that would understand what can and cannot be done on that property.
Yeah, fence, fences are difficult with sinkholes. It's, um.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
So I, I get what you're saying. It's, you know, I'd need a big, big box of red paint or something, I don't know. Um, but I get, I get where you're going with that. Um, um, petitioner or petitioner's representative, would you be amenable to a condition, um, being added to this petition which requires a specific map which details what materials may be stored in specific locations on this parcel of land? Okay. I, hopefully I've said that slowly enough, uh, that we can pick that, that language up. And if you could come up to the mic, microphone, please, and, and, and repeat your answer because you did say yes, but it should be on the record?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for that. I think it would be fair to say that we all have a lot of heartburn about this petition because it is a lot about asking for forgiveness rather than permission. And, and we really hope that that changes in the future, and I, and I can't say that strongly enough. But it sounds like we have added a condition, and we have two, two different ordinances here, both fall under 2024-04. 2024-04A are the positive recommendations that came out of the Plan Commission, and the 2024-04B are the negative recommendations. And then we would add that condition to the, to the ordinance in general that I outlined with the agreement of the petitioner, which I appreciate your willingness to agree to that.
Thank you.
I think you would have been asked to do that anyway, but I think it's, I just want to be very clear about what the expectations are with this property, given the environmental sensitivity of the area. And I'm going to ask Mr. Cockrell to call for a vote on adding the condition I stated to this ordinance, and then we can, then we can go ahead and have a vote on the amended ordinance. I'll see if there's any public comment again, too, but go ahead, please.
So did you make a motion that needs to be seconded?
Yes, I made a motion.
Okay, okay.
You second.
And I'll second.
I'll second. All right. We got a motion and a second. And the petitioner agrees to this commitment.
Ready for a vote?
Please.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
The motion to amend the ordinance is approved three to zero.
Great, thank you. And, and really, this, this is something that would happen anyway, as you know, but we just want to make sure the record's very clear about our intentions, so I appreciate that. Is there anyone else that wishes to offer any public comment on this amended ordinance All right, if you could, Ms. Bierman or Mr. Smith, could you bring up that list of the A and Bs so that we can?
Can you hear me?
Run through them? That, you know, the positives and the negatives?
Can you hear me okay?
Oh.
Yeah.
That's Drew.
Sorry, Drew, we're not done yet. But yeah, Commissioner Thomas, I will try to pull that up here.
Okay. I appreciate that. I think it'll be useful for the public as well. I have it on my, in my system, but, so, just for clarity for my colleagues and for the public, ordinance 2024-04 includes a positive recommendation for adding the use of boat and RV storage only in the allocated area per the petitioner's submitted site plan. Staff recommend, I'm sorry, and a posit, and a positive vote on the after-the-fact disturbance of designated sinkhole B, a positive vote on the after-the-fact disturbance of sinkhole A, a positive vote on allowing storage in the area outside of sinkhole A, negative vote on additional fill for sinkhole B, and a negative vote for any new disturbance or storage of materials within any of the sinkholes located on the property. And there is the amendment, which is another condition which has been added as well in our discussions today. That is what we were voting on, and if, and if you wish to vote yes, that includes the positives and the negatives. If you vote no, it includes the positives and the negatives.
I think actually, as it's presented in the packet and it's presented to you, there would be a vote on the negative, on the positive recommendations.
So we need to do them separately?
Yes.
Okay.
You've got a 04A and an 04B.
All right, so then I will go ahead and call for a vote on 2024-04A, which are all the positive recommendations, number one through four in the packet. Mr. Cockrell?
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved three, zero for the 2024-04A.
Thank you.
As amended.
Thank you, thank you, perfect. And then 2024-04B, the negative recommendations, which are totaling two. If you would call the role on that, please.
And again, just to make sure it's clear that a positive vote will approve the item, not approve the recommendation. So if you vote yes, it will approve the amendment to authorize the additional seven feet of fill to be placed in sinkhole B, and I think that explanation is necessary.
Commissioner Thomas?
No.
Commissioner Githens?
No.
Commissioner Jones?
No.
Motion fails three to zero. Ordinance 2024-04B is not approved.
Thank you. All right. I think that settles that business. Thank you again, Mr. Smith, Ms. Bierman, I appreciate your help. We do have another item on our agenda, please.
Yes, I move approval of ordinance 2024-06, Bloomington Technology Park Outline Plan Amendment Number Seven.
We have a motion, and we have a second, and we have Mr. Myers joining us from planning to tell us all about it. It's almost afternoon, but not yet. Good morning. We can see the slides, we can see you moving, but we cannot hear you. TSD, we cannot hear them. I don't know, Mr. Myers, if you can move over to Mr. Smith's or Ms. Bierman's computer for the presentation, perhaps there might be an issue with the microphone on that computer that you're using?
Is that better? Can you hear me now?
I think you are audible on Teams, but we can't hear you in the NatU Hill Room. I don't know if TSD can address that.
I could hear at that time on Teams, so.
Right, but we could not hear him clearly in the NatU Hill Room.
Is that, is that, is it working now on the NatU Hill Room?
There we go. Thank you, perfect. That's great.
Okay.
Yep, we're ready whenever you are to proceed. Thank you so much for making those accommodations.
Okay, so this one should be fairly brief. This is PUO 23-8, also known as ordinance 2024, and 06, or I believe, one second, I think I got that right. Anyways, this is at 1444 South Liberty Drive. It's in Bloomington, it's in Bloomington Technology Park subdivision. It's also in the Bloomington Technology Park PUD. It's 3.8 acres, and it's listed as Lot 14A. Overall, the petitioner is planning to amend the planned unit development outline plan for this property. The petitioner is Liberty Drive Medical Office Facility LLC, and they're making this request to add the, a large list of permitted uses onto this particular lot. In the Bloomington Techno, Technology Park PUD, there are essentially two sections of the PUD. There are lots that have light industrial uses, and then there are lots that have limited commercial uses. So this is in Van Veren Township, Section One, and like I said, they are looking to add light industrial uses, sorry, they're looking to add limited commercial uses for this site. The impetus of this rezon was due to a request to utilize the property as a hotel, which was determined to not be permitted use on the current PUD guidelines. However, the use of a hotel is permitted on other lots within this same PUD. With later conversations with the petitioner, the intention to have a hotel is not set in stone. It was merely a part of the conversation to start up with this request. Okay, so here are, is a rundown of the current permitted uses for this PUD. So there are, it's a PUD, but it's also a subdivision. So Lot Number One of the Bloomington Technology Park subdivision is actually not in this PUD. The PUD came later on in its process, and it rezoned Lot, the rest of the lots, two through 18. So Lots Six and Nine are stormwater detention areas. Lots Two, Eight, Ten, Eleven, Twelve, Thirteen, and Fourteen, the latter being the subject property, currently all have permitted light industrial uses. Lots Three, Four, Five, Seven, Fifteen, Sixteen, Seventeen, and Eighteen have this list that you see on the screen of commercial-type uses available on those properties. So here we have the zoning map. You'll see the dark red is the PUD. That is all of Bloomington Technology Park. And then you've got some general industrial, light industrial, and general business in the area. And then the white sections that you see are actually the city of Bloomington's jurisdiction. The property is also designated by the Mecua Urbanizing Area Plan as employment. And we do have some brief Highway Department comments here on the screen as well that were included in the staff report, and that is recommending the driveway be developed to be 30 feet wide at the intersection. I'll note on some later items here that I'll show, maps, that there's a long easement that comes through these properties off of Liberty Drive to get access to this property. So the comment from the Highway Department is talking about that driveway entrance. All right, so here on the left side of the screen is a rundown of where all the lots are in this PUD and subdivision. All of the lots in yellow are the lots that currently operate as light industrial uses. All the lots in white are lots that operate with the commercial-type uses. As you'll see, Lot Six and Nine appear, stormwater detention in blue, and then Lot Number One, I denoted in red, it is not included in this PUD at all. So here's some site conditions for Lot 14A. It is in two critical watersheds, the Sinking Creek watershed and the West Fort Clear Creek, Clear Creek watershed. There are some slopes on the property. It does slope up from the driveway and is a bit on a hill, so the, the view from the property is pretty expansive. So here we have some site photos. The building in the background you see here is just an adjacent structure on a different lot. I'm just going to scroll through these. We can come back to them if necessary. The property is vacant, as you can see, it's just a grass field. And this is just pictures of the driveway and the adjacent use to the south. Okay, here we have the letter from the petitioner stating their request. They're basically requesting all of the listed uses that are commercial, as with the other lots of Three, Four, Five, Seven, Fifteen, Sixteen, Seventeen, and Eighteen. Basically, they're just asking that Lot 14 also have all of those uses available to expand their ability to have more commercial-type uses than industrial-type uses. So this is their letter continuing here, describing those details. Here we have the Outline Plan Amendment that shows the driveway here, over here on the far right side of the screen, up here where my cursor is, that is Liberty Drive, so that it's accessed through this driveway easement. And then you turn left onto this driveway that comes back and around servicing this lot and the lot to the south. Here is another image of this. All right. So that brings me to the recommendations that were made from this, for this petition. Staff originally recommended forwarding a positive recommendation to the Plan Commission, and then the Plan Commission on January 16th voted seven to zero to forward this petition with a positive recommendation to the County Board of Commissioners. I will now take any questions.
Thank you so much. Comments, questions, Commissioner Githens?
No, thank you. I muted my mic.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Jones, comments or questions?
No, I don't.
Okay. Let's move on to hear from the petitioner, the petitioner's representative, please, and thank you for your patience in waiting, waiting for this final agenda item. Please introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Jim Boer from Clendenin Johnson Boer. I represent Liberty Drive Medical Office Facility. As Drew mentioned, this property has been zoned since 2001. It's vacant. It has been zoned light industrial. It's not been developed. It's not been developed because nobody wants to use it as an industrial facility. As you're well aware, the properties along Liberty Drive have been developed mostly in a commercial fashion, and we're just looking for an opportunity to do that as well. We're here asking for permission, not for forgiveness, and so we'd very much like for you to give us the permission to develop the property so that we can do it in a way that will add to the property tax, tax base of the county. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Todd Borgman of Smith Design is the engineer on the project. We will make sure that when the property is developed, we have adequate access along that road.
Right, excellent. I think one of the things that was raised is the possibility that there may need to be an internal stop sign somewhere between those parking lots at some juncture, but that's, I mean, that is so minimal, I don't even want to.
Yeah, this is, obviously, this is the PUD outline.
Right.
And we'll address all that at the site, preliminary site plan, which will be another meeting, and we'll, we'll do that once we have a user for the site, once we know what building is going on the site. We had, as Drew mentioned, we had some interest from a hotel that fell through, and what we found is that nobody really wants to purchase or, or is interested in the site until they know that the zoning is in place. And right now, you know, as zoned as a light industrial facility, they don't want to take the time to go through the. the time to go through the process, they want to move on it and move on it quickly. And so if you're able to give us what we're asking for today, which is the Outline Plan Amendment, then we'll be able to go and find somebody who wants to use the site, and then we'll be able to come back with the site plan approval, and then we'll be able to address those issues about access.
All right, thank you so much. Is anyone else here, Mr. Borgman, or anyone from Smith Design, to speak in addition? On behalf of the petitioner or as the petitioner? Okay, I don't see anyone else, excellent. Okay, do my colleagues have any questions for the petitioner, petitioner's representative?
I don't have a question, but I will thank you for asking for permission.
That was great, you know, you never know, you never know if people are listening, so thank you for that. It was reaffirming for me. Commissioner Githens, do you have any questions?
No, I just said ditto, you know, I agree completely.
Excellent. All right. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this petition? You'll be limited to three minutes per person. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in opposition to this petition? Again, you can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in NatU Hill. Seeing neither supporters nor remonstrances, does the petitioner have anything they wish to add to rebut what hasn't been said? I guess not. Okay, so with that, do my colleagues have any final comments? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Githens?
No, thank you.
Okay, so with that, Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on ordinance 2024-06?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved three to zero.
All right, thank you so much, and sir, thank you for waiting, appreciate your patience and your good humor. All right, we don't have any other items on a regular agenda except appointments, and there are three. Commissioner Githens, would you make them all as one motion, please?
Yes, I move that we appoint Amy O'Shaughnessy to the Library Board, she's completing an appointment, the remainder of a four-year appointment, and that will end on January 31st, 2028. Appoint Pat Bookwalter to the Property Tax Assessment Board of Appeals. There is no kind of timeline on that, that's indefinite for that appointment. And then Laura Lane to the Traffic Commissioner, she'll fill out the remainder of a two-year appointment, which will be completed on December 31st, 2024.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. Thank you to everyone's willingness to serve, we appreciate it, a great deal. Assistant Sharp is here, making sure that we did our job today, so there we go. Mr. Cockrell, will you please call the roll on the three appointments?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Motion is approved three to zero.
Okay, excellent. So I do have a few announcements, and the first is that on March 25th, which is a Monday, from 5:30 to 6:30 at the Bachelor School Cafeteria, we will be hosting the Fullerton Pike Phase Three public meeting. The contractor for the Phase Three part of the project and other partners on the project will be on hand to answer questions and talk about the timeline. And there's information on our website as well, so again, if you're interested in the next phase of Fullerton Pike, March 25th, 5:30 to 6:30 at Bachelor Middle School Cafeteria. And I will just note that in previous public meetings regarding Fullerton, the public has had a great influence and impact on the outcome, and they certainly were involved in helping design a beautiful roundabout as well. So please get involved if you have concerns or questions. Just a reminder that vaccines and COVID-19 testing are available at the Public Health Clinic at 333 East Miller Drive, and we also have test kits for COVID-19 available at the County Health Department at 119 West 7th Street. We are always accepting applications for boards and commissions. Go to co.munro.in.us for more information. Given the storms last night, it's a good reminder that to sign up for the Resident Alert System, again, co.munro.in.us, click on the megaphone, and tell us how you want to be notified about weather and other related events. Also note, we do have virtual office hours via Teams each month, there are six of them each month. The calendar at the bottom of our homepage has a list of dates and times. Join us, share your ideas, give us your feedback, we'd love to hear from you, and have a great conversation. The next blood drives are Wednesday, March 6th, 1:00 to 6:00 p.m., Friday, March 8th, 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. That's at Ivy Tech Shreve Hall 200, Daniel's Way, so please go to redcross.org to sign up. We also have, still have some funding left for area residents outside the city of Bloomington who are owner-occupiers of homes, low and moderate income residents who need help getting some basic repairs done to their home. This is about keeping people safely in their homes in the future, and it could be carpentry, it could be windows or doors or HVAC or roof. Please contact your township trustee for more information to apply for assistance. This is funded through the American Rescue Plan Act. And if you live in the township of Perry but outside the city of Bloomington, we ask that you just contact the commissioners directly for assistance. But you can find in the packet a list of all the contact information for each township trustee. Do my colleagues have anything else to add?
Would you give the time again for the thing at Bachelor on the 25th?
5:30 to 6:30.
Thank you.
Thank you. We do not have anything on our agenda for the work sessions, so I'm assuming we are not having one, unless Mr. Cockrell or Ms. Purdy says, no, you got to have one. Okay, good, excellent. So we are adjourned, our next meeting will be March 6th, and we appreciate everyone's time and attention to our meeting. With that, we are adjourned, thank you.